Alright, so let's see. Yeah, identify the following costs in terms of their cost behavior, if they're variable, fixed, mixed, or step. So what do I know about this? In this case, cost of coffee beans would be variable because that changes because of how much they make coffee purchase. The depreciation of airplanes at Southwest Airlines would be fixed because that never changes. Nurse wages at some center assumes a ratio of one nurse every five patients, that's steps so. For every number, for every five patients you get, you get another nurse. Now, how much you pay the nurses is different. Electricity costs at a store would be mixed. Hmm, because there's the, there's the, the initial cost and then how much you use. The cost of hard drives would be variable because they're going to be installed into the computer, so it's based off of how much you purchase. How many computers are built will determine the cost for the hard drives. Less computers means it's cheaper, more computers is more expensive, but it still goes up by a steady rate. Store manager salaries at Barnes and Noble would be a fixed cost. Because salary stays the same unless they get away, unless they get an increase in their money, but. For the sake of the question, I think it's just gonna be fixed. The wages of an actor. And the salaries at the studio when a star is paid base amount plus a percentage. So the stars paid the base amount, that's a fixed cost, but the percentage makes it a mixed cost. Because that's a variable and the, and they fixed. Which makes it a mixed. So as far as more, the only one that's a step cost would be the wages of the nurse. The cost of fabric in making some units would be a variable because it depends on how many units were made. Cost of cookies provided to a guest would be variable because. Not every guest is gonna get them and in some cases, some guests will order more cookies than others. And the cost of national advertising campaign would be a fixed cost because whether people watch it, people don't watch it, the cost is what it is. So then I can look at the following costs. So in this case, I have a table for bouquets sold. And the number of bouquets sold will be three thousand. Five thousand and seven thousand bouquets. So these bouquets have balloons. In them. They also have, and there's ten per bouquet. They also have i- insurance so that the delivery. Can make it. There's a delivery cost. Then there's also an employee's compensation cost. Because you need to pay them, otherwise you're breaking law. And there's an advertising cost. So now I need to determine if the costs are fixed variable or mixed. I know that insurance and advertising are fixed because they're constantly, for insurance's case, it's seven thousand five hundred dollars. And that's the same across the three thousand, five thousand, and seven thousand bouquet sold. And advertising is the same, no matter how many are sold, it's always two thousand. Okay, that makes sense. Then for balloons, the, the money will be nine thousand, fifteen thousand. And twenty one thousand. I know that's a variable cost because there's a constant rate, and the way I know there's a constant rate is if I look at balloons. Balloon costs, I can get nine divy three, which equals to three. Then I can get fifteen divy five, which equals to three. And I can get twenty one divy seven, which is equal to three. That would make it a variable cost because it's constant. And then the ones that I haven't gotten are delivery and employee compensation. Delivery cost at three thousand is five thousand three hundred dollars. At five thous-, at three thousand, it's three, five thousand three hundred and seventy dollars, at five thousand, it's eight thousand three hundred dollars. And at seven thousand, it's one thou-, it's eleven hundred. Three, it's eleven thousand three hundred dollars, eleven thousand three hundred. So in this case, let's look at delivery. It's going to be fifty three divided by thirty. Which is some number. Three divided by thirty gives me. Eight, really? One point. Seven six. Seven, okay? And then for the next one, it's going to be eighty three, wait, clear, eighty three divided by five K. Which is some other number, regardless, it's not a consistent number, they do not equal each other. So this will be a mixed costs because there's something about the delivery cost that changes no matter, and it's not based off a ratio. What exactly changes is unknown for the time being, but. It's something that, there's, is something changing it, thus it's not a consistent cost. For employee compensation. It seems to be variable because it goes up by four thousand each time, however. Because the employee compensation. Is at three thousand, eleven thousand, at five thousand, it's fifteen thousand, and at seven thousand, it's nineteen thousand. However, eleven divided by three gives us three point six six seven. Whereas fifteen divided by five gives us three. Therefore. It's a, it's a mixed cost. So balloons are variable. Insurance is fixed, delivery is mixed, employee compensation is mixed, and advertising is fixed. Okay, this one's gonna be a bit of a dizzy. So after graduating from dental school, Dr. Lauren Farish purchased the dental price of a longtime dentist. Who was retiring in January, she had to replace the outdated autoclave equipment she inherited from the previous dentist. Now, she is preparing her budget for next year, she's concerned about understanding how her cost for sterilizing her dental instruments has changed. She has gathered the following information for her records, alright. We have this table and it's separated into three columns, we have months. We have number of instruments used. And there's total. Autoclave cost. Okay? And so the months are January to August, so there are eight months in this scenario. And then for number of instruments used, it'll be six sixty, five sixty, seven sixty. Nine sixty, eight sixty, ten sixty. Twelve sixty and eleven sixty. As for the total autoclave cost, in dollars obviously, because we're American. It's seven thousand four hundred and sixteen. And then six thousand five hundred and forty-four, seven thousand sixty-six. Nine thousand eighty-six. Seven thousand six hundred and twenty-two. Eight thousand six hundred and eight. Ten thousand one hundred and eighty-three and ten thousand even. So I need to find the variable cost per instrument. In order to do that, I need the high-low method. So the high-low method, high-low variable cost is equal to change in. The total cost. Divided by the number of instruments, divided by change in instruments, so. Change in total cost divided by change in units. And I know this because variable cost is always given in dollars per unit. That's correct. Good. So for this case, the highest total cost is ten thousand hundred and eighty-three. Minus the lowest possible cost, which in this case is six thousand five hundred and forty-four. And then I'll divide it by the change, so at the ten thousand mark, it's twelve sixty. Minus at the six thousand mark, it's five sixty. Which in turn should give me. Five dollars and twenty cents per instrument. Let me just check my math to make sure I didn't do that incorrectly. One zero one eight three minus six five four four, that would be three six three nine. Divided by. Seven hundred. Five twenty, okay, I was correct. So now I need to find the fixed cost of the autoclave equipment. To find the fixed cost of autoclave equipment. I'm going to need, what exactly? I'm going to need to get the fixed cost using low point, uh, fixed cost using low point. Is for that formula. It will be number of units. Number of units. Subtracting open parentheses, the high-low variable cost. Multiplied by the number of. Oh my gosh, so it's not number of units, it's actually something else. To get the total cost, it is the price, the price. Okay, so unit price, I made a mistake. Okay, so it is, it'll be total cost? Because fixed cost will be total cost minus high-low variable cost multiplied by the. By the number of instruments, number of units. So it's. TC minus VC times. Units. And the beauty of this is that. The VC will always be given. With dollar over unit, so the units will cancel out, and the total cost is always in dollars. So it'll always give it to me in dollars. So the fixed cost will be equal to, using the low point of the formula, because we gotta use the low point. It'll be six thousand five hundred and forty-four dollars minus opening parentheses. Five dollars and twenty cents over, over unit. Multiplied by the number of units, which is five sixty. This in turn gives us. Six thousand five hundred and forty-four minus some number. And that some number will be five twenty, five point two. Multiplied by five sixty, two thousand nine hundred and twelve. So with this, I'll get six five four four minus two nine one two, which will give me. Three thousand six hundred and thirty-two dollars. That is the fixed cost. And to get that, I need to get the formula of the total cost, okay? Because fixed cost using low point, it will always just be total cost minus. And, and the reason that it's that is because of the formula, it'll be. The formula is total, well, not the formula, it's the order of operations, total revenue. Minus total variable costs. Is equal to contribution margin. Which when subtract fixed costs, you'll get. Operating income. And then when you subtract taxes. And subtract other expenses. You get net income. And the reason you can get fixed cost from the total cost is because that's what you get, a total cost. Minus. Variable cost. Not in units, will get your fixed cost, because that's whatever you get at the same time. That makes sense, so that, that would mean that the total cost minus the fixed cost will give me the variable cost in dollars, obviously. Good to know. That's very good to know indeed. So the cost formula here. Would be the variable and the variable cost is five dollars and twenty cents. X, because that's the number of instruments, plus are the fixed cost. Which in this case is three six three two dollars. And Y would be the total cost. Which actually, finally enough, looks like Y because I'm X plus B. If TC is Y equals to MX plus B. Because five twenty would be the variable, X is the amount you, another variable. Five twenty is the coefficient, X is the variable, and then B is your Y intercept or the fixed cost. And I can calculate this by graphing it, but I don't, but I cannot allow you to use a graphing calculator on the exam. Okay, so Dr. Farish estimates that she will use one thousand two hundred and twenty-eight instruments next month. What costs does she include in her budget? So if, if. One, two, two, eight units are used. The X just becomes that number. So total cost is equal to five dollars and twenty cents. Multiplied by one thousand two hundred and twenty-eight units. Plus the fixed cost, which will be three six three two. Okay. So it's five point two. Multiplied by one, two, two, eight, gives me six three eight five point six. Plus. Three six three two. Will give me. Ten thousand. Seventeen dollars and sixty cents. For total cost. That makes sense. Good, that makes a lot of sense. The next one that I need to do is Jones Pharaoh, a small CPA firm. Okay, so come, so what do I know from this? No. I know that the company pays five hundred and ninety-nine annual fee. So this probably is a fixed cost. And the tax return is eleven dollars. And that's to license the software. Good. So now I need to get the total cost for three hundred and two returns. How do I do that? I need to obtain, okay, so what is the company's total annual cost at that number? If that is the case, it'll be the number of units plus the fixed cost. Number of units times the price equals the fixed cost, so total cost. So I need to find total cost at three O two, and returns are just gonna be units, unit. Total cost at four one zero unit. And total cost at five two eight units. And since that is for per, per lease. Okay. Let's see if I'm correct, would it be multiplied by eleven? Yes, it is. So it would be three O two times eleven. Plus five nine nine. So in this case, it'd be three O two times eleven plus five five nine. Assuming we're using parentheses, obviously, it'll give me, hold on, that's wrong. Three O two times eleven, okay, clear, three O two times eleven. Plus five five nine. Oh, I'm kicking minus by mistake. Three O two times eleven. Plus five five nine, yes, it'll give me, that's not wrong, that's definitely not right. What am I doing wrong? Three O two times eleven. Plus five nine nine. So now it gives it to me, and then answer is three thousand nine hundred and twenty-one dollars. Good. And it's plugged in the same way for the other problems, because it's a fixed cost and a variable cost. And we have our rate is eleven, so four O one times eleven. And then we add five nine nine, which gives us. Five one oh nine or five ten depending on, no, that's wrong, that's wrong. Four one zero times eleven is equal to that, plus five nine nine is equal to five thousand one hundred and nine. Dollars. Okay, and then the next one will be five two eight times eleven plus five nine nine. So in essence, it's the Y equals MX plus B formula again. Problem that I have with this is that every time he asks it, he always makes it vague. Thus making it rather difficult to solve, as for five hundred and twenty-eight units, it'll be six thousand four hundred and seven dollars. Understood. So now I need to find the cost per return. So in order to do that, I'm going to take the total cost and divide it by the cost per unit. Well, actually, it's gonna be divided by the amount of unit. So it'll be, so cost per unit at three O two. Cost per unit at four ten, and cost per unit at. Five two eight. This will see, this will be three nine two one divided by three O two, which will give me. Three nine two one divided by three O two, which will give me twelve dollars and ninety-eight cents. The next one, it's gonna be five thousand one hundred and nine divided by four hundred and ten. Five one zero nine divy four ten. It'll give me twelve dollars and forty-six cents. And then for the last one, it's going to be like before. Six thousand four hundred and seven dollars divided by five hundred and twenty-eight. Which should give me twelve dollars and thirteen cents. Good. On to this one. King Comics is a wholesaler of popular books. Company records indicate following financial results, so I have at a table. This table is also separated into three columns, column one is units sold. Column, and that will be sales rev. Minus cost of goods sold. And then there'd be gross margin. And then underneath that is operating expenses. And then even lower than that, it'll be net operating income. Okay? That makes sense. So at current year. The units sold is fifty thousand. And in the previous year. The units sold are forty thousand, okay? Sales revenue of current year will be two five zero, zero zero zero, two hundred and fifty thousand. Cost of goods sold would be hundred and seventy-five thousand five hundred. If I subtract these, because I'm a good person. I should get seventy-four thousand five hundred. Which seems about right. And then if I subtract again. Uh, by twenty-three thousand five hundred. I should get the net operating income being to five thousand one hundred. Dollars. And then for the previous year, the sales revenue will be two hundred thousand. Dollars. And the cost of goods sold is hundred and forty thousand dollars. If I subtract them, I'll get my gross margin, which is sixty thousand dollars. And then the operating expenses is twenty thousand dollars. So my gross net, so my net operating income should be forty thousand dollars. Good. So now I need to find the variable component for operating expenses. Okay, so the variable component for operating expenses is. The. Okay, what is it? I remember, I remember, so it'll be change in operating expenses divided by units sold, so. Variable. Component. For operating expenses. Or I guess I could put VCOE. Is equal to change in operating expenses. Divided by. The change in units sold. Okay. So in this case, in this case, VCOE would be equal to. Two thousand tw- two hundred and thirty, my gosh, I can't speak. It'll be twenty-three thousand five hundred. Minus twenty thousand. Divided by fifty thousand minus forty thousand. Okay, does that make sense so far? Yes. So in other words, it'll be three thousand five hundred divided by ten thousand. You plug that into the handy dandy calculator. And I'll get zero point three five, which should be my variable operating expense, and this will be in dollars. So now I need to get the fixed component of operating income. I know the fixed cost is equal to. The. Expenses. Minus. Expenses minus what? Minus what? Fixed cost is, oh, expenses minus the. The variable cost. For unit. So fixed cost will be expenses minus variable cost, total expenses, okay? So in this case, operating expenses. Is equal to total cost. Well, in this case, there, it probably isn't the case in every other scenario, just for this sake, I'll treat it like that. So the fixed cost will be. Twenty-three thousand five hundred subtracted by open parentheses, in this case, the current year's unit sold is fifty thousand. Multiplied by the variable cost of operating expenses, variable component, component of operating expenses. Which is thirty-five cents. So in a way, it'll be fifty K. Multiplied by point three five. So that'll give me. Two three five zero zero minus one seven five zero zero. Two three five zero zero. Minus one seven five zero zero, which will give me six thousand dollars as my fixed cost. Does that make sense? Yes, it does, and if it doesn't, I can review tomorrow, I have time. But next, we have a construction company, great. Because that's what I want to hear about, right, construction companies. Going to need a new notebooks in. Maybe, I don't think so, but I might. I might actually need a notebook. Really? Okay. Let's test it out. This time around, I have vast construction companies' cost of renting a crane in the last four months as follows. So I get another table, this time it's month. I get hours of operation. Operation. And I get rental cost. Good, so month, we have January, February, March, April. So I only have four months to worry about, that's good. Hours of operation, I have thirty-five hours, forty-two hours, forty-five hours, and forty hours. What rental company only operates for forty hours a month? Seems weird to me, but maybe, I don't run a rental company, so I don't know. The rental cost, however, for January will be. For January will be one thousand two hundred dollars. For February, it'll be one thousand three hundred and fifty dollars. For March, it'll be one thousand four hundred dollars. And in April, it is going to be one thousand twenty, two hundred and ninety dollars. So I need to calculate the component for operating expenses. In other words, I need to calculate a variable. Magnificent. I need to calculate a variable. Let's see what I do. In this case, we're using the high-low method again. High-low variable cost method. So change. In. Cost. Over change in units, I believe is what I came up with. I believe that's what I came up with. Let me check the previous page. Yes, it is. Uh, total cost divided by. Wait a minute. Yes, cause this was the high-low method, I believe. Let me check. Yes, with the high-low method, it is change in total cost. Divided by unit. Okay, or action in this case. So it will be one thousand four hundred minus one thousand two hundred. Divided by. In this case, it'll be forty-five minus thirty-five. Or to simpler case, two hundred divided by ten for twenty. Twenty dollars is my. Is my coefficient. So if you go back to the Y equals M X plus B. Or T C equals, in this case, twenty dollars X plus. Uh, fixed cost. I have that going on for me. So now I need to find the fixed component of operating expenses. So in this case, looking at the lowest one. For sake of making my life easier. It will be the total cost. Which in this case is twelve. One two zero zero equal to. Twenty times thirty-five plus F C. So twenty times thirty-five is equal to seven hundred. One two zero zero equals seven hundred plus F C. So my fixed cost. In this case. Is equal to five hundred dollars. That is correct. Good. It's very good indeed. No question. So I assume a selling price of twenty per unit, a variable cost of twelve dollars and fixed cost of five hundred dollars. Two hundred units are sold. Calculate contribution margin and operating income. So what do I know? What do I know? I know the basic one is a total revenue minus. Total variable cost. Gives me contribution margin minus fixed cost. Will get me the operating income. Minus tax. Minus other expenses will get me net income. Okay. So I need to find the contribution margin. So first, two hundred units are sold. Great. So I know the sales price is equal to twenty dollars per unit. And I know that the variable cost is equal to six, to twelve dollars per unit. I almost said sixteen, it's twelve. And the fixed cost is equal to five hundred dollars. Okay, two hundred units are sold. And I also know that units. Equal to two hundred. Okay. So in this case. In this case specifically, I'm checking, I'm checking. It'll be. For the sake of finding the contribution margin. And we go back to the co- to the, to the equation, the operating income equation. It is. S P X minus V C X plus F C equal to O I. And another contribution margin is just S P X minus V C X. So it'll be twenty times two hundred. Minus twelve times two hundred. So in other words, twelve minus eight. Why did I say that? In other words, it's twenty minus twelve gives me to eight times two hundred is. Equal to one thousand six hundred dollars. And that's e- that's the contribution margin. Okay. That makes sense to me. So now I need to find the operating income. Well, I know that the contribution margin in this case is sixteen. Minus five hundred. Minus. Yeah. Minus, yes, it minus. So it's actually, I made a mistake on the equation. It's actually S P X minus V C X minus F C. Or. In other words. One thousand. A hundred is equal to the operating income. Because the formula is S P X minus V C X minus F C equals to O I. Which makes sense because that's how it looks on the sheet. So this time around, I have to get the contribution margin ratio. So how do I get that? Well, to get the contribution margin ratio. I need to see. The contribution margin minus the sales revenue. So in other words, contribution margin is. Mi- minus, really? No, no, it's not as minus. It's contribution margin ratio. Contribution margin ratio is contribution margin divided by sales price. So in other words, it'll be eight. Divided by twenty. Which is zero point four or forty percent. Because the sales price of these things are twenty dollars and the contribution margin is eight dollars because twelve, twenty minus twelve is eight. Eight divided by twenty is point four, is forty percent. Good. I'm, I'm getting it. So now we have a new question. What do I know here? I know that the, the sell price. Oh, this is a Kathy Lenses company sells hand tatted lace for twenty-five dollars per yard. Material costs are four dollars per yard and labor cost is ten dollars per yard. Okay. Estimates that fixed costs is to be fifty dollars per month. If she sells two thousand yards of lace during the month, what is her contribution margin ratio? So. That, I got to write the formula again. So I know this S P equals to twenty-five dollars per yard, per yard. I know that V C one is equal to. Okay. It's a good question. So the v- variable cost number one is the four dollars per yard, cause that's la- that's materials. So this is material. And then variable cost number two. Will equal to ten dollars. Per yard. And that's in labor. And then the fixed cost. Is equal to fifty. Hmm, dollars. And she sells two thousand yards of lace during the month. But I don't think I actually need to worry about that because. A little bit simpler than that. So I know that the, the X here. Or equal to yard. It goes to two thousand. So it's. S P X minus V C. One X. Plus V C two X and we're going to put the parentheses around them so that I don't add them. Minus F C is equal to the operating income. But it's asking for contribution margin ratio. So what I need to get is contribution margin. So it would be twenty-five minus fourteen. And then, which is twenty-five X minus fourteen X. Which equal to eleven X. And then eleven divided by twenty-five. Gives me zero point four four. Which equals to the contribution margin ratio. Okay. Amazing. It's good to understand the assignment. One last other questions, but thankfully, these last other questions are more true or false and not mathematics oriented. So. I need to determine whether the following situations are financial accounting or managerial accounting. In a sense, managerial accounting focuses on reducing costs in an operating segment. Or managerial accounting focuses on monitoring performance of an operating segment with a balanced scorecard. Financial accounting. Focuses on generally accepted accounting principles. And it focuses on reporting quarterly financial data for organizations as a whole. So I know that Volkswagen experienced decline in sale in U S. It dropped eighteen percent in two thousand five and twenty-four percent in two thousand two and twenty-four, two thousand four. The chief executive believed biggest problem at Volkswagen was cost incurred to produce a car. Which was not competitive with other automakers. Company tried to get German workers to agree to pay cuts to reduce the cost. Which in turn would be managerial accounting because I focus it on reducing cost in the operating segment. Then two thou- then twenty, twenty-one, two point one percent drop in quarterly income from previous year second quarter. Oracle Corporation noted the weaker dollar affected revenue in database segment. Weak dollar made Oracle's products more expensive overseas and lowers the company's revenue after currency conversion. That'd be financial accounting because they're trying to get the number reported on the financial data. Cerner, developer of information technology for an industry. As company encourages expense to develop software package. Capitalized those costs as asset beginning in the year after the software is released and then amortizes those costs over five-year period. The known practice in the industry is to amortize costs over three-year period. This would be financial accounting because it's all talking about the practices, essentially generally accepted accounting principles in work. And then B N S F Railway experiences increasing demand for information technology resources even though overall company business isn't growing. To understand technology group operations, the C I O. Chief Information Officer. Developed a balanced scorecard for the I T group. And as soon as it said balanced scorecard, I already know it is managerial accounting because managerial accounting focuses on monitoring performance using a balanced scorecard. I then need to classify if the next activities are planning, controlling, evaluating, or decision-making. A corporate chef prepares a menu, that's planning. Human resource manager reviews monthly payroll and identifies departments that paid over ten workers, that's evaluation. The production supervisor notices the pressure in the sauerkraut fermenting vat is too high. And opens to release valve to lower pressure, that's controlling. Marketing director considers whether to offer fifty cent coupon or seventy-five cent coupon through direct mail campaign. That's a direct decision marketing, decision-making. At end of coupon campaign. Marketing director determines number of coupons redeemed and additional unit sales achieved through campaign, that's evaluating. Sales manager prepares sales forecast for the coming year, that's planning. And the divisional vice president determines which employees should receive performance moments, that's evaluation. So now I need to identify which of the four balanced scorecard perspectives something would be in. The balanced scorecards perspective are financial, customer, learning and growth, and internal business processes. So training hours would be learning and growth, average time to start a customer complaint is a customer. Gross profit is financial, new, number of new products in development is internal business process. Number of defective units produced is internal business process. Percentage of order delivered on or before due date is customer. Employee turnover is learning and growth. The number of new customers is customer oriented, obviously. Market share will be financial and return on investment is financial. Each of the statements below indicate which approach to market share growth is being used. Those are harvest, divest, hold, and build. So. With strategy, a company focused on short-term profits and cash even at expensive market share that's harvesting, they're trying to make cash. Strategy is appropriate when company desires to exit particular market that's divesting. Under strategy, company seeks to maintain current market share and generate reasonable return on investment. It's a holding, so we're trying to stay in its position. Under its strategy, a company aims to increase its market share and competitive position relative to others in the industry, given expense of short-term earnings and cash flow that's building. And to monitor this strategy, management want to know about the gross margin. And cash deal that's harvesting, they're trying to monitor and learn about. Being gross margin and cash flows. In the context of managerial accounting, relevant information is information that will make a difference in the decision. Good managerial accounting information helps managers do their job. Managerial accounting is used by managers to assure appropriate use of organization's resources, accountability for organization's resources. And provides information used in planning, evaluation, and controlling functions within an organization. Which of the following is not a way managers use managerial accounting? To communicate information to stockholders. That is what they do not use it for. What they do use it for is to assure appropriate use of its resources. To assure accountability for resources and to provide information used in planning, evaluation, and controlling functions within organization. An example of an external user would have to be a creditor because plat managers are internal. Company president is definitely internal and the payroll supervisor is internal. Creditors are external. Which of the following is a correct statement? There are three answers here. A, managerial accounting benefits internal users. B, managerial accounting includes reports and information prepared for a range of decision makers within the organization. And managerial accounting reports come in a variety of formats. Is that every question? It looks like it, so I guess that's it for that one.